I welcome all our participants in the special session of the National Convention. We're privileged to have international speakers with us in this special session on Young SDGs Innovator Programme, India's Chapter Kickoff 2021. Amongst the speakers, we have Mr Pablo Varela, Program Advisor, Global Operations, Young SDG Innovators, UN Global Compact. Dr Abha Rishi, CEO at the Innovation Centre and Chairperson of the Centre for Innovation and Entrepreneurial Development, BIMTECH, is also with us on the panel. Ms Aching Ujwang, Executive Director, Global Compact Network, South Africa, would also be joining in a short while and will be participating in this discussion. And I would like to invite now Ms Shabnam Siddiqui, the Official Executive Director of the India Network, to take over this session with our esteemed speakers, who are joining us live from South Africa and USA.
Thank you so much, Trisha. Good evening, everyone. Good afternoon to my colleagues from other time zones. It's a very special session, as we mentioned it in our agenda of the 15th National Convention of Global Compact Network India. Over the last couple of years, what the United Nations Global Compact has been doing, has been developing multiple global impact initiatives, which are implemented in different countries around areas of innovation, ambition, water and others. And India has been learning from other countries. This is the first time that in India, we are launching or we are partnering for the Young SDG Innovators Programme. And this special session is a kickoff of that meeting. So very excited about this new journey and thankful for the wonderful partners that we have already onboarded. As I mentioned, this is the first time that GCNI is participating in this Innovator Programme. South Africa has done it before us, so we'd love to hear from Aching when she joins. And in this particular session, what we are all set to do is meet the facilitator for the India Programme, get an overview from the Global Advisor of the Programme. And essentially, to just say a big hello to all the 40 innovators who will be participating in this programme over the next couple of months. These participants come from leading corporates and small and medium enterprises. The innovators who have participated also represent various sectors, ranging from financial services, alternative energy, electronic and electrical equipment, software and computer services, food and beverages, automobile industry, support services, and of course, the oil and gas industry. The average age of the participants, the 40 participants, is in the range of 30 to 35. That in itself is such an energising thing to imagine that this decade of action would be led, would be conceptualised and implemented by a young group of passionate, committed innovators. We are looking forward to this journey with all of you. And like this particular very short session would help us develop, like you know, what the programme would be like. Also commit our next generation commitment to sustainability leaders and help in building business solutions to accelerate, to impact the Sustainable Development Goals. With that, I request my colleague from the Global Compact Office, Mr Pablo Varela, to set the context for the session, please. Pablo?
Trisha, well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, depending on where you are located in the world right now. So first of all, it's a huge thank you for this invitation and the opportunity to welcome all of you, to welcome India Local Network to the Young SDG Innovators Programme for the first time. So it's an honour to be joining you today. And well, it is truly very exciting to see the interest that all of you had in joining the Young SDG Innovators Programme, either as innovators, as champions, as mentors, facilitators, or as business experts. And also to see that so many companies are interested in investing and supporting its younger generation of leaders. Recognising the amazing talent, ideas and dynamism that all of you bring to make meaningful contributions to the Sustainable Development Goals and to the Agenda 2030. So for the second time, the Young SDG Innovators Programme is bringing together a very unique and driving community of young professionals. It has been set from leading companies from around the world, which share a common goal. And this is to push the boundaries of innovation for sustainable development, while also aiming to create new products, new services, new business models that have potential market value, while also helping to solve some of the main problems and challenges that our societies, economies and planet are facing today. So the programme is an excellent opportunity for young innovators to challenge themselves and to bring the SDGs into the heart of the business innovation process and use them as a catalyst to develop breakthrough solutions with both social and market value. Now, one of the main objectives of the programme is really about you, which is identifying, developing and empowering young professionals from UN Global Compact Companies, enabling you to take a bigger leadership role within your organisation, giving you voice and platform that may not be there on a daily role, and help you to shape sustainable strategies within your companies. So without further ado, I would like to share with you, if I may, some of the programme outcomes that we had in the first round. And this will be followed by an overview at a global level of who is joining this second round, so for you to take a look. So if I don't know if you, if there is a presentation that we can share, otherwise I will share my screen.
Do you want me to play the presentation and share it?
Yes, please.
And share.
Perfect. Great. So as we can see here, in round one, the confidence in the innovator's knowledge about the SDGs, comparing before and after the programme actually grew. Almost 90% of the innovators participating felt that their knowledge actually grew a lot and they were able to make meaningful contributions to their companies. We received very positive feedback from pretty much all of the participants from different companies, different sectors in different countries, saying that they gained important knowledge, they were able to find tools, and they were able to find models that already started implementing in their companies. Now, in the next slide, we can see that over half of the innovators were able to present to the highest level of management inside of their companies, which is very important because these are the ones taking the decisions in other companies. Not only that, but almost 70% of them were able to follow discussions, to follow these innovative solutions. Also important to mention that 55% of the group of innovators that designed these solutions were the ones in charge to drive the project forward inside of their companies. Now, as for the round two, what we can see here in the next slide is that we have an amazing pool of talent, right? We have 478 as now, young professionals joining from 185 companies, more than 30 different industries or sectors from 16 countries. Now, in round one, there were 10 countries. We are very happy to see that the interest in YCIP is growing and now we have 16 countries. Having an average age at a global level of 29 years old, which we are also very, very happy. In terms of gender distribution, we couldn't be happier to see such a balanced distribution, having 50% of female and 50% of male. The majority of the participants have over five years of working experience. Just slightly less have between two and four years of experience and around 11% of the participants have one or less years of experience. This actually, it's very good since you will be able to connect with all of them. And as you can see, we have tremendous experience in different areas. So for example, the main area of expertise among the participants is related to sustainability or corporate social responsibility. This is followed by engineering, which is a very important area to design and to develop the products, where we can see here also that business development, marketing, communications, among others, conform the pool of the participants. So I think this is a great opportunity, right? It's a great platform to see what other companies are doing, to share your knowledge, to learn from others and to move things forward. Now, in our last slide, we can see also that the main interest, or let's say the preferred SDG for the companies is the SDG number nine, which is related to innovation, and followed by SDG number eight, aligned to work, and just followed by SDG number 13, also with 8%, which is related to climate action. So as you can see, what YCIP can bring is actually a good opportunity, given these challenging times all around the world, given to COVID, which has hit economies in a very, very strong way. But this is actually a project that will hopefully empower you and help you to find the solutions that are so needed to move sustainability. So thank you so much again for this tremendous honour, this tremendous opportunity to be joining you to kick off. I wish you the best. I wish we had more moments to meet in the future. And I wish that in the months to come, you have the chance to meet other innovators and you can exchange, you can learn, and you can also teach all that you have. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Pablo, for giving and setting the context. It's amazing that the programme already is present in 16 countries and so many innovators, so well done in the first phase. Since my colleague from South Africa has still not joined, what we can do is we can move on directly to the moment where we launch the YCIP in India by onboarding the implementing partner, BIMTECH, and the Innovation Mission. The facilitator for the programme will be Dr Abha Rishi. And I hand over the floor to Abha to take us through what her plan and vision is for the programme. Abha, please.
Thank you, Shabnam, and good evening to those who have logged in from India. And good afternoon and good morning to those who have logged in from other regions of the globe. So thank you, UN GCNI, for this opportunity so that we can showcase the work that Atal Innovation Centre, BIMTECH, has done and how the participants of the YCIP programme can actually leverage on our strengths. So I have a small presentation because as they say, a picture will be saying much more than a thousand words. And because of the quantity of time, it's better to use the images. So I'm just going to share my screen. Just let me know if it is visible. And by the way, I'm also happy to see that we have conquered gender equality, at least in this panel. So here, Pablo is in the minority. I'm just trying to share the screen. Now, it's still not picking up.
While you're figuring out the screen, Aaching is on, has joined in.
Okay. So you can go ahead, talk to her while I just try and see the...
Sure.
As usual, technology sometimes plays spooky.
Long time, Aaching. We're waiting for you.
Oh, I'm here. I'm here. I was a bit slow in getting in. I think it's the network. I'm here now. Thank you.
Welcome to this special India Kickoff Session of the YCIP. We are following your footsteps in South Africa. So please share with the audience, it's a mixed audience of Global Compact members and signatories, as well as all the 40 innovators who will join the programme this time, this year. So do share your learnings and your wisdom with us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Shabnam and everybody on the line. So we, as South Africa, we piloted YCIP, the Young SDG Innovators Programme. So we started in 2019 and graduated the first cohort mid-2020. And it was a really exciting experience for us. It was new, it was exciting. The element of innovation was, you know, really resonated with companies because companies like to innovate. And because the SDGs were fairly new to them and the whole idea of innovation came across as very appealing, that was the one thing. The second thing is because it targets young managers. And so that created, you know, a lot of excitement within the participating young managers that joined us. So I will probably take a moment and share why this programme has been successful in South Africa. I think that is what probably would resonate or would be useful for companies or for countries or networks that want to be able to pilot it for the first time this year. So the strong relevance on innovation, definitely an attractive factor for companies. The second thing is that the way we marketed the programme. We used social media a lot to market the programme. Even though we were talking to companies directly, we created excitement through social media because we do know the demographics in social media. So that was one thing, and that is one thing that new networks need to consider. Use social media as much as possible. We began this identification process pretty early. So we had a huge lead time before we actually implemented the programme. And we used that time to socialise the programme within companies, to identify and commit companies who then, you know, work with us through the 10-month journey. The second thing that companies found attractive, apart from the fact that the whole programme is almost like an MBA process, with minimal time, very cleverly delivered. The other attracting thing for companies was the way we were able to involve them from the beginning, beyond the programme to, for instance, asking them to host certain sessions. So they owned the programme pretty early. I remember our first camp was hosted at a bank, one of the banks that had participating candidates. So those kind of partnerships, you know, that is one way that we partnered with companies. The second partnership that we got into that really has contributed to the success of this programme. And we're seeing that thread of partnerships coming through even during the second cohort. Because we've, you know, we are continuing our South Africa into the second year. So the second way that we have partnered to really ensure the success for this programme is that we partnered with a business school. So most of our mentors are from the Gordon Institute of Business Science. And Gibbs, as we call it, is also our host in South Africa. So a very, very strong partnership with experts, with, you know, mentors and coaches who are experts and are very strong in particular areas, especially on, you know, when the innovators finally then pick their innovation areas, then we match them with experts on each of the areas. So it's really important for new networks to consider the kind of partnerships they want to forge. And to be very strategic in the way that you reach out to partners, really evaluating what they'll get out of it, but also what you as a network and what the candidates would get out of it. The one thing, and I think it's a highlight of our success in South Africa, was that we picked a young facilitator. So under 35, also, you know, from one of the major companies that are Global Compact Companies. And he learnt and facilitated the entire process, of course, with a lot of support from us. That resonated with the young managers and that really made it usefully challenging them. They really stretched themselves out. And the young facilitator, being a sustainability professional already, helped. So he learnt the innovation side of the process, but was very, I think, useful in the fact that he understood SDG content. Hence, he was able to really guide the innovators to think through, you know, breakthrough technology, to really lift their own ambition and to think outside the box. We really did challenge them. So that knowledge, the way, you know, how do you choose your facilitator? Who is going to, you know, facilitate the whole 10-months process? What sort of expertise do they bring in? What is it that they would need to sort of learn on the go? So there's also a lot of learning even for facilitators. That should not be a barrier, so long as it's an energetic and knowledgeable enthusiastic person. Beyond, beyond, and Shabnam, you'd allow me to say this, beyond the classroom, you know, process, because it's like a classroom. We, you know, avail a lot of platforms for the innovators, so international platforms. If you remember last year, the Global Compact Leaders Summit, we put across a lot of young innovators to really take up the platforms during the UNDA week in September as well and within the African continent as well. So we've used this opportunity to expose them to really be the champions of sustainability, not only within their companies, but in society more broadly. And so as we move to the second phase of this programme, what we are trying to do is also not to forget the alumni, to still be in touch with them, to still pull them. And the most interesting thing is that when we have called for mentors for this second phase, some of the mentors that are coming in are innovators from last year. So really successful on the way you thread, you know, important on the way you thread and keep the old innovators as your champions, even as you approach the next phase. What have been some of the key challenges? Let me first talk about the programme highlights, the outcomes from this group of innovators. And I'll give you a few examples. One of the big companies here in the financial services sector gave us three innovators called Old Mutual. And they have developed a digital classroom initiative that we are going to really implement across all the areas of operations. And this is a multinational company. So a big, big approach with massive financial support, supporting education. That is something that is an outcome of this process through those young people from Old Mutual. The second example, and it also shows the level of commitment that this young manager got from their individual companies. You know, a number of CEOs have really supported the innovation. The second company has approved building an energy plant as part of the innovative idea that the young people, you know, came up with. Unfortunately, I cannot give you the detail because some of this is still through the state, the confidential stages and the intellectual property issues associated with them. But I think the most important, you know, idea is the fact that companies are putting their money behind these ideas that these young managers came up with. The third example, and this is important, this is about how do you embed the SDGs in the company? So one of the banks, Investec, their group of young managers have come up with a model of creating a policy. Instead of SDGs sitting within isolated spaces within the company, what they were saying is that how do we ensure that 8,000 of Investec employees own the SDGs? So they are building a model around that. We have a fund manager. The company that hosts, that invests the government pension funds. You know, their young managers were saying, we do not have an SDG investment fund. So we are going to innovate around that and push through the company and ensure that there's backing that we launch an SDG investment fund. The final example I want to give you is from the mining sector. One mining company, their young innovators saying, we want to create an economy on mine dump, where even nearby mining companies through collective action will then partake in that particular project. So very many good examples, Shabnam, have come out of this process. We were actually mind-blown by the extent to which companies and CEOs and, you know, individual companies are, you know, supporting these young people, ensuring that the ideas that they came up with through the programme are going to go through a proper, proper typing process and it will be implemented. And most of them are looking for finance. Some of them already concluded how those projects will be financed. A number of them are still exploring the best possible options of implementation, identifying partners, you know, looking for collaboration and really moving at speed to try and ensure that it doesn't go to the dustbin, that they give life to these ideas. Before I finish, what were the challenges? What were the challenges during the process? I think yes, maybe consistency in terms of the portal, like the Global Compact creates a portal where offline, you know, when you're not physically learning together, you can share your examples on the hub. So we felt that we'd need to enhance interaction on the hub. So this learning of physical interactions onto the online space. We felt that sometimes there was inadequate participation or commitment of some of the mentors to really push them. 10 months is a long time. And because this is a voluntary initiative, when we go to a company to ask a mentor to support, or to the business school to ask a member of faculty to support, it's really a big commitment. So sometimes we experienced gaps, where we felt maybe they needed to be more incentive so that the mentorship runs unperturbed throughout the process. In some cases, we felt there was low engagement from champions. A champion is your support from within the company. So we have instances where maybe that wasn't consistent as well. And on our side, as a network, we could have done better. We did incredibly well on social media, but we do still love traditional media. I think we would have done better, you know, through penetrating traditional media, making sure there was a broader outreach, there was broader awareness through newspapers, through radio, through TV and more write-ups. So going forward into this next phase, we're going to try and explore the broadness of the media and ensure that we use this programme to also create awareness in society as well, because there's a lot of learning for everybody on the SDGs. So thank you. Those are the short ideas and successes that I'm able to share today. As you said, it's a great, great programme and, you know, I'm excited that you're going through it this year.
Thank you so much, Aaching, because that I can, like, just from your presentation, I could realise how involved, committed and driven you were by the YCIP. And very happy to share that because some of the process that you mentioned about a good partner, a good mentor, a good facilitator, I think based on the maturity of the network itself, we got that firsthand. And with that, I mean, we would like to onboard and introduce a facilitators for the 10-month programme. They are already innovators. Dr Abha Rishi is a fellow alumni from one of those prestigious evening fellowships. And she has a personal vision of enabling 10,000 innovators as she walks through the entire process. So this 40 will be an addition. She does have access to a lot of things. Without further ado, Abha, please.
Thank you, Shabnam, again. And Ms Aaching, it was really nice listening to... Thank you, Shabnam, again, and Ms. Arching, it was really nice listening to what you have done. And I'm happy that I've heard you before I started my presentation. Because now I'll be able to reassure that the YCIP program is in good hands. So like I said, let me just share a few things with you. Is the presentation visible?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Is it visible now?
No, Tamanna, yeah, it's coming, Abha.
Okay, great. So.
Put the presentation in the slideshow mode.
Okay, you want it in a slideshow, no?
Yes.
Uh, just a second. You want it like this? Or in the complete slideshow?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, the complete slide or just this way, the vision mode?
I think the complete slide would be better if you can see it.
Yeah. So visible now?
It is.
Thank you. So first of all, let me tell you that the Attila Incubation Center is a part of the Billa Institute of Management Technology, which is a 35-year-old business school. And it is ranked among the top 10 among more than 4,000 institutions across India. So we are right up there and we are the only management institution to have got the top ranking in the Attila ranking of innovation institutions, innovative institutions in India. So that's another feather in our cap. So when it comes to innovation and entrepreneurship, they are definitely up there. And otherwise also, I mean, for people from India, they will recognize these two figures. So we have J D Billaji, who is the patron for our institution. So Billah is like the Rockefellers of US. So we have the Tatas and the Billas. So it's more than a hundred-year-old legacy that we carry of entrepreneurship. And along with him, of course, his mentor, we have Gandhiji, who has been a great believer when it comes to sustainability. So when we join both of them up together, we have this vision that we have that to create economic and social impact through entrepreneurship. And in the three years that this Attila Incubation Center has been in operating, we have had more than 1,400 applications and we have taken only 93 incubators. So our selection process is pretty stringent and we make sure that we focus on sectors which are targeting some of the SDGs. See, it's very easy to go commercial, but then India is a country which requires both. You need to have both social as well as economic outlook. So these are some of the targeted SDGs that we have through our 93 incubators. And the focus, of course, we also have on the different sectors. EdTech definitely is there on the top for us because through EdTech you can reach out to populations which have not been really connected with what is required when it comes to education. So the rural sectors, that is where we work on. And let me just talk about a few cases, I think that you'll be able to understand how the incubation center works through the incubators. So this is one of the cases that I wanted to bring to the fore. So this is Trucksudha, the name of this company is Trucksudha. Basically, they have created a aggregated logistics platform. But more than that, they also realized that unless they took care of their own trucking community, their venture is not going to scale up. And in three years, not only did they get funding of 1.25 crores from GAIL, but working on their business model with us, they have been able to create a asset under management and AUM of more than 100 crores. So if I were to talk about it in millions, it would be something like, what? 10 million dollars is what they have created in the last two years. And along with that, like I said, the main focus is on making sure that the trucking community gets the benefits. So social sustainability is part of their agenda. And here we have another case, which youngsters. By the way, let me also tell you that the range of incubators that we have here ranges from 18 years to 51 years. So there's a whole spectrum out there and these are youngsters who have started their venture. And their focus has been on creating women jobs, I mean, jobs for women. So when they got funded, the first thing that they created was that the manufacturing that their unit that they're going to put up is going to be completely taken care of by women. And not only have they been successful, they have got lots of, they've gone in for the series A funding and now they'll be going in for more. And the second unit is also coming up again to have only women personnel, so. The third case, I'm being very fast, I mean, if in any of the cases that you want more details, just reach out and tell more about it. This is an 18-year-old boy. He was keen on creating some kind of an environmental impact. So after a lot of research, he understood that the temple ashes which are there, I mean, the ashes which are created by burning incense sticks and flowers and other things, they actually contribute to a lot of pollution to the rivers which are nearby. So he worked on that and he has created these kind of statues which are there from this temple ash.
Abha, I think your presentation is not moving.
Is it?
Yeah, it's stuck on the first slide, at least to me.
Is that so? I mean, is that the same with everybody else?
Yes, with Richard also, I think. Tamanna, are you able to clearly see it?
So I'll just talk about the things and move ahead. So this chap, what he did was, not only did he look at the environmental impact, but he also looked at getting jail inmates, prison inmates to be his workforce. So AIC Bintec and Bintec does a lot of work with jail inmates. And I'm part of the foundation which works along with them. And we joined up these two people and the jail, the prison inmates were able to have a livelihood. They also learned a new skill and this boy was able to do what he wanted for creating social and economic impact. So a lot of things like that. But besides this, we have programs which are specifically run for social fellows. And the idea is that each of our incubators who are there, when they work with us and when they move out of the incubation center, they should have something which creates a direct impact on one of the SDGs. So that's the, I think, I mean, since the presentation is not working, I'll not go too much into it and I'll just talk about it. So then we have the participants from the YCIP come and be with us. They will get a lot of benefit because we have more than 77 partners, not only nationally but globally, who will be able to, who will love these, these young entrepreneurs, these young innovators. Because when you talk about innovation, there are a lot of elements which need to come in. And the first thing is understanding the problem itself. Understanding where is it that India needs those kind of innovations coming. So understanding the SDGs is going to be the first goal that we have with the YCIP participants. And then understanding what are the resources that within their organization they can leverage on one and what are the resources they can take from us. So our institution, the AIC, the Attila Incubation Center, also gives something like 1.25 billion dollars worth of benefits to our participants. So that also can be extended to the YCIP participants. So these are some of the things which are going to be there. And the faculty who is going to be teaching them, so I will be the main facilitator, but the faculties who are going to be there, they come with a range of experience. I mean, whether it is social empowerment, whether it is rural development, a range of things. So I'm quite sure that by the time the 10 months that the participants are there with us, they will have not only reached to a certain level where they have a good understanding of the SDGs, but also they will have created some innovative solutions which will change the way India is right now. Because some of the organizations which are there, they can be real good changemakers. And it's going to be our job to make sure that, yes, those solutions are created. So I, I mean, I think I've taken enough time, so open to questions if there is any. But otherwise, like Shabnam said, I am very passionate about this. I have been working in this space for the last 15 years and I have co-founded two ventures of my own, both of them working in the area of healthcare for the bottom of the pyramid. So. That's all, over to you.
Great, great, Abha, I know, like, when we did our background work of getting the right facilitator, because as Arching said, that is key to the success of a program. And then I think, because this session was supposed to be just a short one of introductions so that the innovators know who all are there in this particular program. But we'll have more opportunities for cross-learning across countries, across sectors. And we look forward to those things. With that, I quickly, we have overshot on time for this particular session. But so without further ado, I request my colleague, Ms. Panchali Sharma, whom the Indian innovators and the facilitator and everybody will be seeing a lot of, to please propose the vote of thanks. Panchali, please. Panchali, your voice isn't coming. You're not audible, Panchali. Say something now.
I'm sorry, you're not audible. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, thank you, ma'am. So, respective chair and the distinguished speaker of the day, I deem it a great honor to propose the vote of thanks to all who have helped us in making this, this special session of India's kickoff of the Young SDG Innovator Program 2021 such a resounding success. First of all, I would like to propose hearty vote of thanks to the chair of the session, Ms. Sabnam Siddiqui, ma'am, for gracing today's session. Thank you, ma'am, for sharing your insightful thoughts and welcoming all the speaker of the session. I would also like to thank our distinguished speaker, Mr. Pablo Varela, Dr. Abha Rishi and Dr. Achinga Ozamba for sharing their insight on various aspects and implementing areas of Young SDG Innovator Program. Also, I would like to thank Billa Institute of Technology for agreeing to becoming the implementing partner for the program and to facilitate all our upcoming YCIP session. Today, we had the opportunity to hear all your thoughts and this will surely going to encourage us to connect, to conduct our future camp more successfully. This was a very much-needed session where all the innovators got the opportunity to virtually meet their facilitator as well as the advisor of the program. I would like to mention the implementing ideas and the best practices of the South African network, which was covered in this session, was truly relevant and informative for implementing the YCIP program in India. Once again, I would like to thank you all for considering our invite and gracing this occasion. Furthermore, I would like to thank all the innovators from India who are the part of YCIP committee, community. I am sure everybody listening to this session have got a chance to have an overall view of the program. Thank you all for your presence and we look forward for your continuous participation in the forthcoming online YCIP camps too. Also, I would like to thank my profound gratitude to Mr. Asim Kumar Sir, Head, APRC GCNI, for his continuous guidance and support to all the team members to deliver our best in making the session and the national convention a very successful one. Last but not the least, I would like to thank the wonderful audience for their active participation in the event. And it was really great having you all here, wishing you a very good evening, thank you.
That is awesome, Panchali, thank you so much for giving the vote of thanks. What an amazing and inspiring day it is being. And I thank all the esteemed speakers, honorable guests, all the participants who've been with us on day one of the national convention today for making it a great success. And we look forward to your support and participation on day two tomorrow. We would be starting sharp at 11:00 AM for the concurrent session. So we hope to see you all, join us there and have some more engaging and enriching discussion with us. Stay tuned with the GCNI and we look forward to your feedback and suggestions also. Thank you so much for making it a great success once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Ending the day session right now.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. You all, now we end the, we end the session.
Yeah.